We'll call to order the City of Douglasville City Council Regular Meeting, our voting meeting for tonight, which is Monday, February the 6th, 2023. We will have our invocation, we'll call this meeting to order, and we'll have our invocation by the esteemed Pastor James Harper from First Presbyterian Church of Douglasville, and then the Mayor Pro Tim will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please welcome Pastor Harper.
Thanks for the invitation to be here. Let's pray. God, you are good and faithful to us, and you have given us much, and we know that those who have received much, of much is expected. And so, we come tonight as a community to support and encourage this body of elected leaders. I'm grateful for their love for this community, for the good things they seek, and all that they've accomplished. They have a lot of wisdom amongst them, and we pray that you give them just a little bit more. By your Spirit, you would give them discernment and insight and wisdom about the things that are before them. There may be lots of opinions around them, help them to have the courage and the stamina and the wisdom they need to do what's right and best for this community. And we ask that in the work that they do, there would be flourishing here, and we pray that we would have a desire among us all in this community to seek the best for one another, and to bring your goodness to bear in this way, in a very tangible way in this community, so that all would prosper here. And we pray these sayings in Christ's name. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tim. We appreciate the leading us in the pledge, and Pastor Harper, we appreciate your invocation or prayer of civility. Thank you so much. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council. My name's Rochelle Robinson, I'm mayor of the City of Douglasville. This is a City Council Regular Meeting where agenda items, where official action will be taken tonight on those items that were discussed last Thursday at our Legislative Work Session. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the Agenda Item Comments from Citizens and Delegates section for you to discuss your business. I'll go over a few procedural items, and then we can get into our meeting. I ask that you would please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts, and important for us to make our decisions. We will not accept personal attacks on any individual or group of individuals. You'll receive a warning from the Chair if that happens, and the second time will be a deviation. If you deviate from that, we'll turn your microphone off and ask you not to continue in that manner. Only one person speaking at a time, please do not applaud or react to speakers. Speak from the audience, cheer, or carry on a conversation when you're at the podium. Please address your comments and concerns to the Chair. We're only required to accept public comments during a required public hearing, and if you have any materials that you would like to disseminate to us, please give those to our Assistant City Clerk, and she will make copies and give those to us at a later time. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, we ask that you would please put those in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting. Now, the agenda items will be handled in the following manner. The Committee Chairperson will read the agenda item, and then that person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. We may ask additional questions that may come up tonight that we did not ask on last Thursday. After that, Committee Chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience. There's a maximum of 20 minutes for those in favor and 20 minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes, and you have one opportunity to present. And we ask if you come forward, if we have anyone that comes forward from those issues last week, that you would only bring new information. Prior to coming to the podium, please fill out a speaker sign-in card. They are located outside on the desk, and you fill those out and give those to Ms. Jackson, our Assistant City Clerk. And when you come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we'll be happy to hear from you. This is not a question-and-answer or debate format, we're just here to get the information and deliberate and make our decision. And this is a voting meeting, so to go a little bit differently than it did last Thursday, where we had a Legislative Work Session. Now, we'll move on throughout the agenda. There are copies outside for paper agents if you like to hold one, or you can look on the screen for the digital one that's printed up there. Also, now we'll go on to item number five, which is Approval of the Agenda. I will open the floor for motion to adoption of the regular meeting agenda for February 6th, 2023. Open the floor for a motion to adopt the meeting agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. I think it was Councilman, there you go, Adams, and second by Councilman Estes. Those in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-three dash zero zero nine, excuse me, is adopted. We'll move on now to Approval of the Minutes. Open the floor for Approval of the Minutes of the January 12th, 2023 Legislative Work Session and Executive Sessions, and the Minutes of January 17th, 2023 Regular Meeting. Open the floor for Motion to Approve.
So moved.
Thank you so much. Let me turn this one off. Have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Watts. It's been motioned to approve by Councilmember Adams and second by Councilmember Watts. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns as it relates to this item from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The minutes are adopted. We will move on then to the Consent Agenda, that's item number seven. I will open the floor for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. It's been properly moved in second by Councilmember Estes and second by Councilmember Davis to approve the Consent Agenda. Do we have any comments, questions, or concerns from the council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The Consent Agenda is unanimously approved. Now, we'll move on to item number eight. It is the Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tim. We'll move on then to Finance Committee chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have three items tonight to consider.
Yes, sir.
Item A is authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Riley Contracting Incorporated for the West Pines Maintenance Facility renovation, RFP 22-2022-021. Mr. Thompson, do you have any additional information for us since Thursday?
Yes, sir. The only additional information I wanted to point out to you guys were basically in regards to the references that we reached out to, which was the City of Meadow, Shiloh, and Rockdale. And like I mentioned Thursday, we received positive feedback from each city.
Okay. Are there any additional questions for Mr. Thompson concerning this item? Do we have any idea, Mr. Thompson, at what point we would be able to get started on this project? Do you know what the timeline is?
I'll say within the next two weeks, and then the construction duration takes three months.
Okay. Madam Mayor, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Seeing none, then, we'll move forward. I'll make a motion on item twenty-three dash zero one nine to approve.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Watts. It's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty-three dash zero one nine. Do we have any comments or questions from council members? No? All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-three dash zero nineteen is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll move on to item B. Authorize the mayor to execute Change Order 10 with Ray Lynn and Associates Incorporated for the Douglasville Downtown Amphitheater Green Space Construction Project to remove and haul away the remaining unsuitable soil and unforeseen rock encountered around the site. Mr. Thompson, any additional information?
I have no additional information at this moment.
Council, Madam Mayor, any additional questions concerning this change order?
No, sir.
I would make mention, I want to make sure that everyone within our viewing and/or listening audience or that may be here tonight, present, that we are in good shape as far as our contingencies in change orders, even with this one included. Correct, Mr. Thompson?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. No other question or comment? Make a motion that we approve item twenty-three dash zero six two.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. It's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty-three dash zero six two. Do we have any additional comments or questions? I know we had a lot of deliberation or just healthy debate and information on this last week. It's exciting. Okay, I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-three dash zero six two is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One last item under Finance. Authorize the mayor to execute Change Order number eleven with Ray Lynn and Associates for the Douglasville Downtown Amphitheater Green Space Construction Project for the modification to the horizontal mullions at the overpass bridge. Mr. Thompson, we had lots of discussion on this item, a description of what exactly that meant in layman's terms. Is there anything that you need to add to that?
No, sir. Nothing additional.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments from council or Madam Mayor concerning that change?
No, sir.
And once again, we would state that we are in good shape as far as our contingency with that project, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Seeing no other question, then, we make a motion that item twenty-three dash zero six seven is approved.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. It's been properly moved in second by Councilmember Adams, second by Mayor Pro Tim Miller to approve item twenty-three dash zero six seven. Do we have any questions for Mr. Thompson? Thank you. I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. C is unanimously approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all that we have tonight under Finance.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Thompson. We'll move on then to Housing and Community Affairs Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under Housing and Community Affairs.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No ayes at this time, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. Personnel and Organization Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Personnel and Organization.
Thank you so much, Coach. We'll move back then to Councilmember Adams, and it is Planning and Development Committee. You're the Chair of that as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, we have three items tonight, is that correct?
Let me see.
Planning and Development Committee.
Yes, sir.
We will start item A. Consider a request for Platte Approval for the purpose of adopting Glenn at Kensington, Phase 2A dash 2, on approximately 36.64 acres at Summerlin Parkway, Land Lot 757 and 18, District 18, Section 2. Parcel numbers 0757-1820033, and a portion of parcel 0810-1820055. Application by D.C. Kensington LLC, care of Daniel Fields. Ms. Reed, do you have additional information for us tonight?
No, sir. Just a reminder that there is a condition for this item, where staff is asking for there to be either a second means of entrance, exit, or sprinklers.
So then, the request, and this is based upon the Fire Marshal's, the County Fire Marshal's requirement, correct?
Correct, sir.
Okay. And so, during the work that would be started here fairly quickly, I'm sure, then that decision would have to be made by the developer. And if there is not another entrance, then basically, there would have to be sprinkled, correct?
That's correct. So what happens is that they won't be able to receive their CO until those things happen.
Okay. I actually drove through this complex over the weekend, and just curious, I don't know that you can give me this answer now, but I'd just be curious to know how many total property lots there are in that development. I know there's several phases, and I think this is one of the final phases, is it not?
This is two out of three?
Two out of three.
And the applicant is here if you want to know that number.
Well, unless the applicant was the original developer, I don't know that they would know the number of the total lots.
Okay.
Just curious. No problem. We won't hold up anything there. Any question or comment of Ms. Reed or of the developer? Yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, you look like you're inquisitive about something.
So the city is asking, the staff is asking to have a second means of egress from, but we're not seeing that on their drawings, are we?
Not the city. Not the city.
The Fire Marshal's.
Fire Marshal's. Okay. But we're not seeing that shown on the drawings.
Right.
Are we voting to approve this tonight, or no?
Let her respond to that.
So the condition that would be placed is that even if it's not placed there, if you have it adopted, right, he has an option to have two different things, either a sprinkler or a road. He hasn't decided which of the two technically, so adopting it with a road would mean we've chosen the one over the two for him. The CO holds it to where if he doesn't have one of the two, then he won't receive the option of selling those homes. He's already started in communication with us and the Fire Marshal that he's working on that. He's just going through the process of obtaining the land to open the road. So he is going to have a second entrance from conversations we've had with him.
But are we, but we're voting to approve this tonight, then?
That's correct.
With that option, with that option on him. That's his option. That's his option.
Okay. But I mean, we still have to vote based on a contingency, correct?
We have to vote based upon him operating under the condition that he has to do one of two things.
I guess maybe I'm just, it's a matter of language.
It's, I think, the concern, it's a condition, not a contingency.
Correct.
Condition, okay. So if that, that means that this reverts back if we don't, if he doesn't comply with that?
He won't get his CO.
Okay. Just want to make sure that we're not.
So just to clarify.
We're not getting ahead of ourselves.
Right. Correct. And we've done this before.
Yes, sir.
It's not something new. If it's okay, if the developer would mind coming forward, I'd just like to ask a question concerning how he goes about making that choice or that decision, just so that we'll all have clarity. Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Daniel Fields, with D.C. Kensington LLC, 270 North Jeff Davis Drive, Fayetteville, Georgia. So we, this came to our attention after we had had our LDP issued, so we kind of came around to this at the end of the project and tried to make it work. And we do have an access point to enter into an existing subdivision through an existing cul-de-sac, and we've already worked with city and county staff to make that happen. It's just a matter of getting the approval from Kinder Morgan and Georgia Transmission to access through their easement, and once that's done, we'll be able to proceed with putting this road in.
Mr. Fields, have you had any other instances where you have sprinkled entire homes in other developments, or have you ever been given this choice or this requirement?
We, so typically, the requirement, there is a requirement if you have a certain number of lots. That's changed with the International Fire Code over the years.
Yes.
And so, this did not come up when we originally had our plans approved. At this point, we've actually installed per our plans a three-quarter inch water service to each house. In order to sprinkle the houses, we would have to go back and put a one inch. So that ship has kind of sailed at this point, so we're doing our best to figure out a secondary access point.
Okay.
And I think we have a plan to make that happen, so.
That would bring you out at the back of a subdivision development on County Line Road, I'm thinking. Is that correct?
It's, I don't think it's County Line. It's, I can get that exact address if you need it, but.
I'm just curious, in writing through, I could see where you were intersecting other streets over at the gasoline tanks, you're near there on, I believe it's North Burn Hickory, and then also.
It's in between, it's not that far up. It's for a long way down.
Okay.
But we, it's only an emergency access road, so it'll be gated.
Okay.
And it won't be a primary access road.
As long as it satisfies the Fire Marshal's requirement, that's all that we are concerned with, and that's something that came over through the Fire Marshal.
I'm hoping we can get this done very quickly.
I understand. Okay. Other questions or comments of the developer? Okay. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Reed. If there are no other questions or comments, then we'll move forward. I'll make a motion that we approve item twenty-three dash zero one five with the conditions stated.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Watts. There's a motion in second to approve item twenty-three dash zero one five with the conditions that were read or given to us by our Community Development Director, Ms. Shayla Reed. Do we have any additional comments or questions as it relates to this item? Thank you. I don't see any. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-three dash zero one five is approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll move on to item B. Hold a public hearing and consider a request for change in zoning from LI Light Industrial District to GC General Commercial District for 2.91 acres located at Plaza 92 Drive in Land Lot 53, District 1, Section 5, Parcel 05301-50032, and 005301-50086. Application by BT Storage LLC, care of Shawn Gleason. Ms. Reed.
Yes, sir. Just a reminder, there were conditions mentioned for this item as well. There was a mention to make a requirement for there to be an alternative parking plan consideration for the parking count, and then the second item was the fencing, require there to be a fence for this particular use.
Okay. I know that we held a public hearing on Thursday, so, Mr. Dodson, are we required to hold another public hearing tonight, it being the voting portion of it?
Yes, I think it was probably.
Probably be it. All right. Okay. We want to make sure that we do in fact do that and give the public the opportunity to state any pro or con concerning this. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this item? Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and we're prepared to hear from you. Okay. Seeing none, then, we'll close this portion of the public hearing. Ms. Reed, is there any other requirement that in downzoning this, I believe is what we would call it, since we're going from LI down to General Commercial, is there any requirement that would then come in under General Commercial as to buffers, things of that nature that will have to be adhered to, and have those been discussed, and are they agreed to them?
Yes, sir. Once that particular zoning is provided, GC to residential will have buffering requirements, and that's usually done during your LDP process, and so that would be installed or insured at that time.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Anyone else? Okay. On item twenty-three dash zero two seven, make a motion to approve.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. It's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty-three dash zero twenty-seven. Do we have any additional comments or questions from this, about this item? Okay. Not seeing any. I'll make a motion to approve. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-three dash zero twenty-seven is unanimously approved.
We'll move on then to item C, the final item tonight under this committee. Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a variance from Section 3.07B of the Unified Development Ordinance to reduce the minimum square footage for three-bedroom multifamily units from 1,500 square feet to 1,200 square feet. Site consists of 53.846 acres on Lee Road in Land Lot 719, 727, 21, 722, District 18, Section 2. Parcel 07191-820005. Application by Novo Sweetwater Owner LLC, care of Parks Huff and Mike Griffin. Ms. Reed, can you help us with this item, please?
Yes, sir. The applicant's entire team cannot be present, and so they have asked to have the item deferred into your next voting session.
Okay. And those dates would be?
Sorry, sir. Don't have that.
That will be the round of February 16th and the 20th.
February 15th and 20th?
16th, Mr. Chairman.
16th, I'm sorry. Okay. Any comment or question concerning this item not being considered tonight, but being, basically being tabled?
Tabled.
Is that correct, Ms. Reed?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Questions, comments? Okay. Seeing none, then, I'll make a motion that we table item twenty-three dash zero thirty-nine until the meetings of February 16th and February 20th, 2023.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to table these items. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to table item twenty-three dash zero three-nine to the meetings of February 16th and February 20th, 2023. Do we have any additional comments, questions, or concerns as it relates to this item? Don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item to table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-three dash zero three-nine is tabled to the meetings of February 16th and 20th, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all we have, and thank you, Ms. Reed. Appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on then to the next item, which is number 15, Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening in public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. 15, Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening, but.
Yes.
I would like to take a minute to brag on our Community Relations Department.
I know.
For being given the community, I mean, the Spirit Award at the event on Saturday night by the Chamber.
Yes, sir.
And after the awards portion was over, I went and tracked down President Sarah Ray to thank her for giving the award, and she went on for over five minutes.
Oh.
About how wonderful Community Relations is and how helpful they have been, talking about how talented they are and dedicated, but even more importantly, what fine, fine people they are across the board, and it was just so wonderful to hear. We all know that.
Yes.
We're very proud of them. I'm sorry that they're not here, except for one or two back behind the glass there, but we are very, very proud of that group.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
And that's everything we have this evening.
And I will just piggyback on what you're saying. I don't know if you can hold me, I'm kind of, kind of heavy, you might drop me or something, but the same thing for Community Relations in this 2023 Legislative Guide for Georgia Trend, they are listed helping us to be a visionary city, and we have the City of Douglasville in here, Ms. Emily, and it talks about Douglasville Junior, so we were awarded that, and a big sign for Douglasville and how things happen in the community. So we were, the City of Douglasville's Communications Department was awarded to help the City of Douglasville be a visionary city, and so they are featured in the Georgia Trend for of Douglasville be a visionary city, and so they are featured in the Georgia trend for February 2023. So Communications Department is on fire. Yes, sir. So thank you so much. Now, we'll move on then to Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No business tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman Davis. Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to piggyback on Mr. Estes' comments and just say that it's amazing that every time you turn around, one of the departments, one of our departments in the city is winning some award statewide, and we've got great people working for us. Madam Mayor, we have no business tonight in Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.